Ready, wait?
All right, sounds like we're getting closer. Glenn, were you ready?
Yes.
Pretty close. Jesse says we're ready? All right, so, good evening, everybody. For the record, it is 5:15 PM on Thursday, March 25th, 2021. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. So I've called the meeting to order. We always start with a pledge to our flag. So, Councilmember Bailey, would you lead us?
I will, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being and everyone.
Thank you, Councilmember Bailey.
You're welcome.
For roll call this evening, we have six councilmembers in the room with us tonight. Councilmember Kulas, are you on the line?
I am, Mayor.
All right, thank you, sir. So we have all seven present tonight. Our first item on this evening's agenda would be the consent items, which would be a motion to approve this evening's agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings, and the work done by J. and K. Earthworks on a sewer rehabilitation project. So I would entertain a motion if we had one.
Your Honor, I will make a motion to approve the agenda, vouchers, minutes from previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor, J. and K. Earthworks LLC, on the 2020 sewer rehabilitation project 1909, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Esparza, second by Councilmember Harold, to approve this evening's agenda, vouchers, and the minutes from the previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor, J. and K. Earthworks LLC, on the 2020 sewer rehabilitation project 1909, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher certification on behalf of the city of Wenatchee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have one presentation tonight before we start our public hearings. This is a presentation regarding Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. And I think we have Lisa on the phone with CASA, and I believe Councilmember Hornby has that for the record. If you wouldn't mind reading that on the record, please.
Proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, and nurtured, and to be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse. And whereas the majority of children abuse cases stem from conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community, and prevention efforts have the potential to benefit many children in Shilana and Douglas County. And whereas child maltreatment occurs when parents and caregivers find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and lacking the ability to cope, and abuse and neglect not only harm children directly, but also increase the likelihood of future criminal behavior, substance abuse, health problems, and risky behavior. And whereas the cycle of child abuse and neglect can be broken by providing community support to families through programs such as the court-appointed Special Advocate CASA program that helps determine the best way to provide a healthy environment for children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among social service agencies, schools, faith communities, civic organizations, criminal justice agencies, and the business community. And whereas Shilana-Douglas CASA program is one of five nonprofit court-appointed Special Advocate programs in the state of Washington, and the only CASA program to provide a trained advocate to every child removed from their home due to abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, I, Frank J. Coontz, Mayor of the city of Wenatchee, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month in the city of Wenatchee, and call upon citizens, communities, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in efforts to support families, prevent child abuse, and strengthen the communities in which they live. I witness, therefore, I have caused the seal of the city of Wenatchee to be affixed on the 25th day of March 2021. Frank J. Coontz, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hornby. And I see Lisa on the, sort of on the line. I see you on my computer screen. Would you wish to say something here while you get a chance? If Glenn can unmute you?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, city of Wenatchee, because it really does take this community to raise, stay stable, and provide nurturing relationships for our kids. And you'll see our pinwheels around the community, and they're just going to be a reminder to you that this is a unique opportunity for all of us, businesses, individuals, and of course, everyone in the city of Wenatchee, to take action by learning more about child abuse prevention, supporting child-friendly policies and services, and volunteering within the community. So we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, and thanks for the great things that CASA does. I know you guys do great work. And again, thank you for helping the kids that need it. So we appreciate it. All right, so we have two public hearings tonight. The first is regarding an increase in sales tax of 1/10th of 1% in accordance with RCW 8214-530 to help with homeless and affordable housing issues. For public hearings, what we'll do is we'll first hear from staff. The council will ask questions of staff. We'll then turn it over to any member of the public that wishes to address the council on this item, and there are, I believe, a number of you that are on the line. And then we'll turn it back over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. I will say this first, as we've been doing COVID meetings at the city of Wenatchee, this is the first time we have felt the need to expand and use go-to-meeting, because we have so many of you that are interested in participating tonight. We will do the best we can to get each and every one of you the three minutes that you get under city rules to address the council. So bear with us as we sort of work through my first try at go-to-meeting, and I'm sure I'll do it wrong, but we're going to try our best. So presenting on behalf of the city is Glenn DeVries. Sandra is with us, and then Councilmember Linda Harold is with us. So, and our city attorney, Steve Smith, and our police chief in the back, although I think he is probably going to have to come up at some point. So I'll turn it over to our team and go ahead and get started.
Good evening, Linda Harold.
Make sure you speak into the mic, Linda, if you can, so folks can hear you.
Good evening.
Get right in there.
Can you hear me okay? I'm Linda Harold, Councilmember for the city of Wenatchee, 1913 Hideaway Place. Do you want to?
Oh, Glenn DeVries, city of Wenatchee, Community Development Director.
Sandra Van Austin, Community Development Director. Or Director Department.
And we have Chief Steve Crown coming up too, as well, from the city of Wenatchee. So, thank you for all hearing us tonight. Some of this information, you've already seen it before. You heard it on February 18th at our workshop. So much of this may be a repeat to you, but much of the public did not hear it. So we're going to go through it again. My job tonight is to give you the why. Why this is important. Why should you pass the 1/10th of 1% sales tax increase? And I'm going to tell you, this is not something any one of us want to do. It is not an easy thing to do. I don't like increased taxes, but we're at a point of desperation in our community. We have a problem, one that's only going to get worse if we do not do something. In the past few weeks, I've had people make comments to me that they are afraid that we're going to become like Seattle. Well, Seattle had a problem too, and it started out fairly controllable, but they allowed the homeless to sleep on their streets and do as they pleased. They coddled them. They were sleeping in your interways, in your, on your doorsteps, in your, outside your place of business, in your alleyways, in the parks. And it wasn't too long before it was out of control, and it only got worse. And look at where they are now. I don't want to see this in our city, so we need to do something. We have approximately 350 homeless people in Shilana and Douglas County. Eighty-four of these people are considered unsheltered, and 43 of them are considered chronically homeless. Overall, we are decreasing the number of homelessness. But out of this 350 people, the most, the worst of it is the chronically homeless, and that number is increasing by 19% over the past year. These are the people that suffer from drug and alcohol addiction and mental health issues. Currently, they are taking over our streets, they're camping in the alleys, or on the sidewalk in front of your business. They are parking their RVs on every street downtown, and many patrons of businesses are afraid to even enter for fear that they may be accosted. I myself have been threatened as I walked out of the doors at the Wenatchee Convention Center and walked down the avenue and took a left on First Street, and I had four homeless gentlemen threaten me, "Get out of here, you're in my home, or else." I was on a public sidewalk. They did it because they knew they could do it, and they could get away with it, and nobody was going to be able to do anything about it. Due to the case of Martin versus the city of Boise, our ability to control this problem was eliminated by the courts. The homeless, they depacate on our sidewalks and bathe nude in the fountain at the Wenatchee Convention Center Plaza. One homeless person parked two vehicles on Worthing Street, and I know you've seen the pictures. They were one block apart, and in between, they were filled with junk. He has mental health issues, and he suffers from hoarding. They destroy our personal property and tear open our electric sockets so they can charge their smartphones. Our Parks Department has accrued over $280,000 in damage due to vandalism. This is a huge expense for the city. Over the past two years, Confluence Health has accrued $2.5 million in unpaid healthcare charges that they will never be able to collect because of homeless going to the emergency room and not paying for the bill. And the legal costs are astronomical to our court system and our police department. Our police chief will testify that having the police deal with the problem is not the solution and very costly. Why? Because of Martin versus Boise. Their hands are tied, and they basically cannot do anything. So what is the solution? We need a low-barrier shelter, and this would enable us to provide them the wraparound services to deal with this segment of the homeless population, and get them off the drugs and alcohol, and work with them on their mental health issues. These shelters would finally give the police a tool to work with, because then we can require that they go to the shelter or go to jail. Make your choice. We would finally have a place to send them. Phase two would include the, possibly a day center, and that's what we're hoping to do. Additionally, by providing the wraparound services to deal with their substance abuse and mental health issues, we can help them become contributing citizens of the community. If we act now, we can have a huge impact on this growing problem. Seattle stalled, and waited, and did nothing. And look at them now. To quote the documentary, "Seattle is dying." Do you want this for Wenatchee? This can happen here as well. Again, we need to act, and act now. Next, you will hear from Glenn DeVries and Sandra Van Austin from our Community Development Department, along with Steve Crown, our police chief, with more information on our plans and actions. After this, and after the public comment, I urge you to take action and vote yes, and help us get this started. It is not only a humane thing to do, but will give us the tools we need to deal with this problem. The problems that the homeless creates in our community is going to cost us far more than providing the shelter and the wraparound services that go with it. Thank you. Sandra?
Thanks, Linda. Nice masks, Sandra.
Color-coordinated.
Okay, got it. Make sure you're talking to the mic, so folks can hear you.
Okay. Well, as Councilmember Harold indicated, we're here to propose adoption of the ordinance 2113 that would impose and enact the additional sales and use tax of 1/10th of 1% for affordable housing and related services like low-barrier shelters. And we did provide a detailed overview at the February 18th work session, along with a detailed white paper. Councilmember Harold shared some of these statistics, but on any given night in the Wenatchee, East Wenatchee area, we have, on average, 350 people that are considered homeless. Eighty-four of those, on average, are unsheltered, and those are the folks that really are the most visible, especially the chronically homeless. These folks have lived on the streets for an extended period of time, oftentimes years at a time, and have serious medical and behavioral health issues. And these are the folks that we all see. They're the most vulnerable, and they're the most visible in the community. Shilana and Douglas County, because of some of the recent court rulings, really has limitations on how we can interact with these folks and get them into services. And right now, we don't have adequate low-barrier shelter capacity. There are shelters in the region, but none of them are completely low-barrier, and even if they all were low-barrier, they don't have enough beds to support the population that we're currently encountering. And just really quickly to just clarify low barrier and what that means. Basically, that means that there are minimal barriers to accessing services and staying in service. So it doesn't mean that it's a free-for-all, and there's no rules, and that people can just do whatever they want or use drugs on-site. People have to be safe, but it's just kind of making it as easy and seamless as possible for people to access services. Because of that, there are a lot of people that are camping in public spaces. RVs are becoming an issue, and that creates a whole range of hazards and nuisances. And because of those recent court rulings, there are limitations. And this has a lot of significant community impacts, and impacts definitely for the homeless individuals. We covered this in a lot of detail at the February work session, but just, you know, a couple highlights. Definitely, by enacting a true low-barrier shelter, we will be in compliance with Martin versus--
Invalid selection.
--versus the city of Boise ruling. Improved health outcomes for the homeless individuals themselves. These folks often have no insurance, they're unable to access care, and because of that, they rarely are able to treat medical conditions. Getting them into safe shelter helps them take that first step to get services to improve their own health. Also, physical safety for the homeless individuals. A lot of times, they're the ones that are victimized by crime. It's very unsafe for them to be out on the streets. Lower COVID transmission risk due to social distancing. Right now, if you have 80-some people out on the streets, the COVID transmission risk is much higher. Councilmember Harold mentioned the unreimbursable healthcare costs. Confluence Health is estimating that they lose about $1 million-plus a year treating homeless folks that have nowhere else to go, because they tend to access the emergency rooms as their primary care facility. Decreased negative law enforcement interactions, and-- Chief Crown, I don't know if you'd like to address that?
So, I don't want to rehash a bunch of the information, but I will say this, is that when you're dealing with homeless populations, again, the chronic homeless, you're talking about a lot of folks that have mental health issues, behavioral issues, drug, substance abuse issues, and really, they're going to continue to be a problem. They're going to continue to escalate as we get towards the summer months. I think you're going to see a lot more of the population grow. That generally means that folks that found emergency shelter over the winter to avoid the harsh conditions are now going to be out, and they're going to use our mild temperatures during the summer months as a means of sleeping wherever. It creates a tremendous impact on the number of calls that we receive. Having a low-barrier shelter allows something that is really important to me, is giving these folks the proper help that they deserve and need by having those wraparound services be at the location where you're going to have a low-barrier shelter. This is not the end-all-be-all solution. I can attest to that. There are many more pieces that need to happen in order to make it really functional and actually get these folks the help they need. Putting them in jail is extremely costly, and this is a way of actually addressing some of these folks further up the stream before they end up in crisis, before they end up impacting business in our community, quality of life issues, and ultimately can end up being incarcerated as a result of that. So I'm in support of it. Again, it's a piece of the puzzle, and it's not necessarily the end-all-be-all, but it is a, if we develop something like this, we have a location where we can put some of these folks during harsh conditions, and also get them the services that they need so desperately.
Thanks, Chief. Glenn, you want to add anything, or Mr. Smith, or Sandra? Who's, anybody else got anything to add?
Dave Erickson.
Parks Department's going to come up. Hi, Dave.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks Director for the city. Linda asked me this afternoon if I would come in and maybe share a little bit of what we see in some of the parks. And if you guys have read our week reports or quarter reports, you've seen some of the pictures and stories of things. Roughly, we've had about 40% of our park maintenance staff either attempted assaults or assaulted in the parks from some of the folks that were living there. We deal with defecation. We've got folks having sex out in the public, so we get complaints about that in the parks doing drugs, going to the bathroom, even if there's bathrooms available. Last summer, as an example, we could barely keep the Centennial Park restroom open, because it would get vandalized almost daily. And so then we would close it, fix it. In the meantime, folks are going to the bathroom in the park, and then we'd reopen it, they'd vandalize it, and we're kind of continuing with that cycle. So I didn't have a lot of time to put together a whole bunch of pictures and things, but I did pull together a couple of handouts for you with some photos. Some are actually vandalism incidents that are just random vandals, and the other are kind of more transient homeless-related. Let you just kind of picture and see that. So you have three different things in this packet. You've got a cover kind of memo, which is a preview for something that's coming in at a couple of meetings, some policies that we've been working on for a number of months. The second one, the kind of the green pages, is an excerpt from our 2020 annual report, which kind of highlights the incidents, as well as some of the graffiti and other damage that we've had. And then the last one, the red pages, that is from our 2021 first-quarter report, so that's a preview for you of what'll be coming out next week of some of the things that have happened so far this year. So it's a challenge for our crews to keep up on things.
Thanks, David. Yeah, come on up, Steve.
Steve Smith, city attorney. I kind of view this as, there's many aspects to this, but there's three primary things, I think. One is the kind of the humanitarian side of this, in that I think we have an obligation to take care of those that are less fortunate than others. And then I think there's also a budgetary aspect to this, as Dave Erickson and the chief commented, it's very expensive to deal with this issue through the police and court system and through the issues that our parks have. So from a council point of view, I think you have to deal with those two elements. The third element, the third aspect that I deal with is the enforcement arm, and we're really hamstrung as far as enforcing our code or a no camping ban in the city. We do have no camping in the parks, but we don't currently have a no camping ordinance, you know, like on our sidewalks or the remaining part of the street. But we're really hamstrung because of that Boise case, and that basically says that without a low-barrier shelter, if there's no place for these people to go, then we can't outlaw camping. So we're really hamstrung without that remedy. So that's, I guess, the one good part of this tax is it would provide housing for these people and get us over that hurdle, that then we could have more enforcement mechanisms for the camping issue. So that's my comment.
Thanks, Steve. Glenn, you want to say something, or should we take questions from the council first?
Mr. Mayor, we do have some more presentation left if we could--
Okay, that's fine.
--wrap up, and then we also have the finance director to speak to the financial components.
Okay, perfect.
Want to continue, Senator?
Okay, so for a myriad of reasons, we feel it's really critical for the community to develop a low-barrier shelter. The Homeless Task Force and the Low Barrier Planning Subcommittee of the Task Force have researched best practices for eight months, I believe, and have looked at a number of funding options and program models, and really determined that current funding sources, our current homeless funding grants, just cannot support it while also supporting our other services. So the city of East Wenatchee and East Wenatchee, or city of Wenatchee and East Wenatchee researched options for enacting this tax. So what we're recommending today is that both cities enact the tax and combine revenues to do a two-phase approach. One is developing the actual sleep center shelter, and then phase two, expanding existing services like permanent supportive housing, day services, other services that can be braided and connected to the clients at the sleep center. And just a quick background on 1590, it was House Bill 1590 was enacted in June 2020. It was allowing cities and counties to implement the sales and use tax for affordable housing or housing-related services through council manic authority. Counties had the first option to enact by a September 2020 deadline, and they opted not to. And so at that point, both cities are enabled to step in and enact it. So the projected revenue for Wenatchee, initially, the projections were 800,000 to 900,000 per year, and our finance director has revised that based on current revenues, so I'll let Brad speak to that. East Wenatchee is projecting approximately 400,000 a year.
We're going to get every department head to testify here.
Good evening, Brad. Brad Posey, Jack Finance Director. Kind of speaking to the actual, sort of the financial impacts that we'll see and what this means to the sales tax rate, if any of you have looked at your receipts, you'll notice at the bottom it says 8.5% for the sales tax within the city limits of Wenatchee. Of that 8.5, 2.0 stays with local government agencies. And of that 2.0, 0.85 comes to the city's general fund. That amount to the city's general fund is, has been about 10.3 to 10.4 million over the last few years. So this, instead of the, you see the 8.5%, this tax would be 0.1%. the last few years. So this, instead of the, you see the 8.5%, this tax would be 0.1%. And that 0.1% should bring in roughly 1.2 million for the homeless program. Some of the impacts on the customer that we'd all be concerned about is that increase from that 8.5% they would see on the receipt to the 8.6% that they would end up seeing. Based on, based on some of the research that I did about what the average household income and what an average consumer spends on taxable products, it looks like with an average household income of 100,000, maybe a quarter of that is actually spent on taxable retail goods, so 25,000, and that equates to about $25 a year that this 1/10 of a percent would have an impact on, on an average household. I guess the last comments I have is talking to the Department of Revenue, the, if this is adopted and we're able to report to the Department of Revenue by April 19th, this will take effect on July 1st, and that's when businesses will start collecting, will be on July 1st. And then it takes almost two months for that, actually, almost, yeah, two full months. At the end of September, the city would start receiving the first actual cash from that tax. And so then after that is where that'll grow into that 1.2 million.
Thanks, Brad.
So just a quick description of the two phases that we were referencing. So the first phase would really be developing and opening the sleep center, and it would target unsheltered and chronically homeless clients, so those 85 poor individuals that we were describing before. A sleep center model, they have similar programs in Walla Walla and Moses Lake, and the concept, we shared some pictures previously, was small buildings, huts, usually 30 to 50 per site. They're individual units. They can vary, but tend to be six by 10, up to 10 by 10. They're weatherproof, so they can withstand the cold, the snow, the wind, heavily insulated, but most often not heated. So with the proper insulation, they tend to be 20 to 30 degrees warmer inside than outside. So they are safe, and they provide that shelter safety for people. The sites usually have modular buildings for staff and for restroom facilities, and that's really key to bring in staff that can provide those wraparound services that are so key. Sleep centers tend to be open just in the late afternoon evenings and early mornings. So there's case managers, usually with split shifts in the evenings, and then they come back in the morning, and then with security overnight. So the site is always supervised, and there's always somebody there overseeing it. And then, you know, again, that tie-in with key services. So the most successful programs have partnerships with healthcare providers, behavioral health, all sorts of community resources that can be brought in on-site. And so we've been, you know, researching some leverage partnerships, like for instance, with Confluence Health and Columbia Valley Community Health to bring people to the clients. And the ideal location would be close to public transportation and services, but not located in a residential area or near schools or in the downtown core. So that would be phase one. And then phase two, once that sleep center is operational, like we said, it would be really tying people into services and looking for ways to expand affordable housing, expand permanent supportive housing, really making sure that there's options for people to move on to. And then just a quick overview of what we're projecting the population to be in the current community capacity. So what we're proposing for the sleep center initially is that there would be approximately 40 units. Ideally, each unit would have up to two beds available, ideally one person per unit, though. But the idea being that there'd be capacity for 40 people, up to 80. There's also a couple other community resources in play. Women's Resource Center is opening a new permanent supportive housing facility this summer, so that's going to be 20 new beds that this chronically homeless group, 20 of those folks can move into. The Gospel House is an existing shelter. They're not completely low barrier at this point, but they've made a commitment to move that direction. So they have beds as well. They don't have enough to support, they're, they have clients currently, so they don't have enough beds to fill the need for the 85 additional people, but they're a key piece of our community capacity. So potentially, by enacting the sleep center, we could have 120 beds available. That would be considered low barrier. That could more than serve the population that we're targeting, as well as meeting the Martin versus Boise ruling. And just quickly, budget projections, and these are very general at this point, and a lot of the capital startup would be, you know, dependent on the actual site that we ended up with, but we're projecting 1.2 to up to 1.4 million to get it up and running. And then after that, based on the staffing model we described, around 385,000 per year to operate. Funding considerations, it's going to require funding for land acquisition, capital, construction, and long-term operational costs. And our existing local funds, most of our funds currently don't allow for capital. It's very limited. And the other thing is, we would have to defund some really critical services if we were going to support this sleep center solely with our current funding. And so we really believe that this 1590 funding is really key to making this happening. And so again, we've been working with the Task Force and with the city of East Wenatchee to look for opportunities to braid funding. And this is just an example, to just give you a sense that if 1590 isn't available just based on our current funding sources, what would have to be defunded? And so in that chart, the first line is really for site acquisition, construction, and operation of the first year. We're estimating, we do have a one-time low barrier shelter grant that can be added to the pot, so 1590 funding could provide up to $900,000 to get the program going, open and operational for a year.
Valued selection.
If we were to just use existing funding, we would have to defund all current emergency shelters for women and families and domestic violence survivors. Permanent supportive housing would need to be defunded, and a good chunk of our transitional housing. So it would really wipe out a lot of our existing services. And ongoing operational expenses after the first year, most of the emergency shelters, the current programs and the permanent supportive would need to be defunded. So it's, we don't feel it's feasible with current funding.
And Glenn DeVries, Community Development Director, again. As was noted, Eastern Wenatchee has also looked at this, and last, on March 16th, the council held a public hearing on the same ordinance, their ordinance being contingent on the city of Wenatchee adopting it in order for both to move forward, which is what our provision says for them adopting as well. They did adopt the ordinance. Part of the discussion they had at that hearing, though, there were questions from the council on, they were interested in the ability to review at any point the effectiveness of the tax in the program and being able to remove the tax if it's no longer needed or not effective. And response to their legal counsel indicated that tax could be removed at any time by action of the council in a public hearing, and that's the same here as well. Some of those questions, though, speak to accountability and making sure the funds are being used wisely, that the council has an opportunity to review the decisions going forward on policies and what's being funded so that it's effective and it's accountable, and the public has an opportunity to comment. So one thing that's necessary as we, if this is adopted, is that we have an inter-local agreement with the city of East Wenatchee on these funds, and that this accountability and process on how to manage them be built into that inter-local agreement. And that inter-local agreement would come before the city council for you to review and then allow, if approved, allow the mayor then to sign. And what staff's done in this, in the motion that you'll see in a little bit, is that staff's added a motion to component to direct staff to draft this inter-local agreement and then come back before you, and then you'd have that chance to review it. It doesn't amend the ordinance, it's just a directive to staff. So what are the recommended components of the inter-local agreement? Some primary ones we recommend are that we develop, that the inter-local agreement simply say that metrics be developed for the performance interview of the program. The inter-local agreement wouldn't say what those metrics are. Those have to be developed. And yearly, every single homeless and housing program that we have has metrics, and we look at those every year. We monitor the programs. Sometimes we find out that we need new metrics, and we make changes on the annual or every other year to all the programs that we run for the homeless program, based on that data receipt we receive. So it's extremely viable to track and monitor the programs, and you just have to to be effective and to make those course corrections over time. So that would need to be a component that, you know, we require in the inter-local agreement that that, going forward, that there would be metrics for the program, just as other programs. One of the recommendations we have is that annually, that the city councils engage staff in reviewing the program priorities and funding decisions, and we'd be required to because it's a budget component, and annually we review our budget. And annually, the public has an opportunity to comment on those budgets. So we do recommend, and it would be required, that all those priorities and spending components be reviewed by the council every year. And that additionally, though, we recommend that there be an annual report of the program components with analysis of program metrics, and that that be provided to the council. So you have that ongoing review to, or course corrections, to be involved, and to make sure that the program's going in a direction that you intended it to. Additionally, we suggest that there be an opportunity for five-year joint, every five years, there to be a joint session of the city councils. Maybe that's done in conjunction with the annual, that every five years we update our homeless plan. Maybe that could be done in conjunction with that. But it could be a good opportunity to take a holistic view, step back and see how it's integrating with the goals in the homeless plan with the goals of the city and the community. And that's just a suggestion that could be incorporated. Another component that would need to be done, though, is lay out the administrative and operational responsibilities for the program, the staffing, and how bills are paid, those types of responsibilities, and then also how there would be coordination with the Shland Douglas Task Force so that the program components can be integrated with these services so that we're moving forward with implementation of the homeless plan. One of the things that's been mentioned, again, I think with the concern of accountability and making sure that we're following through with the intended direction of this tax and the program, would, some folks are interested in a sunset clause. That's certainly something the council could choose to do. It can create challenges, though, for employee recruitment and retention if you have that component in there. And it does eliminate the ability to bond for facilities, and that can be a nice tool. While we wouldn't need bonding to do the sleep center, the phase two components include a day-use center, and if one was constructed or purchased, you know, bonding can be very beneficial for that. That gives folks somewhere to go during the day, which is equally as important as the night, and then you can do the wraparound services for both. Well, then you get them stabilized. You need a place to have them go to, to be more successful, whether that's permanent supportive housing or regular housing. Well, housing's obviously very expensive. Bonding can be a very useful tool. So we just recommend that, as you look at this, that you consider building in accountability. We've made some suggestions for the inter-local agreement, but we think that takes care of the accountability component, puts the council very much in charge of it, provides the opportunity for public feedback without calling it a sunset clause, and retains bonding options. So staff, here's a suggested recommendation on a motion for consideration of the sales and use tax, and then also the recommendation that staff be directed to work on that inter-local agreement to bring back before you. Did staff have anything additional, Director? Okay. Well, we would stand for any questions.
Okay. So I'll turn it over to the council for any questions of staff. So I don't know if you have any. Keith, you want to go first, or Jim, who has questions for staff? I know this is the second or third time we've heard this.
I want to read this ordinance, and then I'll ask questions.
Okay. Somebody want to ask a question?
I have some questions, but that's-
This is different than what we have in our packet, correct?
Yes.
The only thing different about it is the last paragraph, the last sentence that says, "Staff further recommends that council incorporate the implementation components identified in staff's presentation for interlocal agreement with the city of East Wenatchee." Everything else is the same.
Correct.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Russ.
So if we build this shelter, are we going to get people potentially from Leavenworth, Jalan, Cashmere?
We could, yes. And the homeless population, and Senator can speak probably more accurately this than we can, the majority of our population is, the homeless population is from the two county area that we have, about 85, 87%?
Yeah, close to 90% are Shland Douglas, and about 85 are Wenatchee, East Wenatchee, and a very small percentage are from out of the region.
And most other shelters have found in Walla Walla and then Moses Lake, that they haven't really seen an increase in population from outside of the area.
I guess one last question, and this question's for Steve, is with our current city code, would we have the tools to enforce, you know, like camping out on the sidewalks or in open public spaces if we had the shelter? Or would we have to revise the code to give it more teeth so we could actually enforce, you know, some of what's happening now?
I think we have to revise our code to be more restrictive about the sidewalk camping and that sort of thing. Right now, we're basically prohibiting it in the park, but we've been prohibited from doing anything more aggressive than that because of this Boise.
And if we did build this shelter, would revising the code meet the standards of the Boise decision?
I think it would because Boise basically says that we can't arrest and jail people for camping in public if we don't have an alternative place for them to go. So by doing this, we're providing a place for them to go, having beds for them, then we can enforce those sort of laws.
Thank you.
Additionally, if I could, we, I forgot to mention that there would need, on this, staff's work plan is if this is adopted, there would need to be a specific code that outlines and authorizes the sleep center. And then also on our work plan and working with the Homeless Task Force is to ask for a summer count, a point-in-time count, to get more accurate data for the summertime, because historically, they've been done in the winter.
Congressman Bailey, you have any questions for staff?
Yes, I do. And I guess I'm, well, first of all, I, you know, I am in favor of this move to add that 1/10. As Linda said, it's, you know, we've got a problem, we've got to take care of it. I guess, as kind of as it's evolved here this evening, I'm a little unclear on the numbers, and if you'd help me with this. We currently have, as I, I believe I'm correct, we currently have a grant or have grant money to use for, broadly speaking, homeless. I'm not sure what the parameters on the use of those dollars are. What's that number? How much is the grant, the money that we have currently to use?
And Councilmember, are you speaking to the total number managed by the Shland Douglas Homeless Task Force?
No, the grant we got from Commerce, the $900,000 grant.
Specifically for this?
Yeah.
Okay, that's a low barrier shelter grant. It's a one-time grant. The total is 642,000, I think, and 80,000 of that had to be used for hotel vouchers as an interim measure, so that leaves a balance of, I think, 560.
Okay.
But that is a one-time grant. It's not ongoing funding.
Okay. And so I guess what I'm seeing here, and it's, I've got, there's a number of pieces here. The one that I guess, and Steve Smith, please, our attorney, would, this is probably the question for you. I pulled up, you know, I pulled up, you know, RCW 8214-530, which is the enabling, or the legis, or the, not the legislation, but the, the code that, that put House Bill 1590 into play. The, the low barrier shelter seems to me to be, according to that, to the, to the current RCW, and then kind of where the dollars that I'm looking at here, what it's going to cost to build the low barrier shelter, the sleep center and so forth. It appears that most of the dollars that we're really have or are going to collect are going to be going to build, to build, build housing. The, the low barrier shelter is taking a fairly small percentage of, of what's going, the dollars that are going to be raised. In the RCW, Steve, it says there that notwithstanding section, subsection four, and so forth, and so forth, a minimum of 60% of the money's collected under this section must be, and then it lists three things that it has to be used for. It looks to me like that prohibits, I mean, it, it, help me here, is, is this include, somehow do you get low barrier shelter inserted in there somewhere? Or it looks to me, the, the language here looks like it's exclusive of that, rather, it's, it's more for something else. And, and that's, I guess that's the problem I'm having here, is that we're, we're going to, going to tax the community, both of our communities. We're going to raise a bunch of money, but, but the, the shelter is actually not going to take much, you know, much of that. I mean, you know, after we get it built, it's, what do you say, 380,000 or 80,000 a year? But we're raising 1.2, you know, 1.2 million. So that's, and I guess the, the, the selling point is to get this, the shelter in place. But the other things down the road, at this point, seem to be a little more, a lot more nebulous. So I guess I'm looking at, you know, the concrete versus, you know, what, what, what may, in quotes, be coming. So I'm sorry if I'm rambling around the bush here, but, but that, that sort of is raising a, you know, kind of a question in my mind about, you know, the dollars that's going to be collected and what's going to be used for.
And, and I picked up on that, too. Just looking at the resolution, to me, it seemed like it, it's not specific to the intended purpose. It's more, it, it seems to me that the, that the way we're going about it would potentially dilute the whole purpose and intent of what we're trying to do here.
Steve, any comment on the, on the, that 60% thing and what it can be spent for?
Yeah, well, the way I read that is that 60% of the money has to be spent on constructing affordable housing, which may include new units of affordable housing within existing structure and facilities providing housing-related services.
So that's it. So that's a low barrier shelter?
Yeah, I'm thinking this is housing-related service. They don't go any further than that. They do define the persons that you have to serve, and there's a whole group of persons. And we've determined that a high percentage of the people that we have issues with would fit within that.
So a minimum, 60% of the money has to be used for low-income housing, and a shelter is one of those things, as would be other services around that. I don't think we're diluting it in any way.
But you could potentially dilute it later, use those monies later for something that we're not intending to do today. If you read it, if you read, I'm looking at the resolution.
So let's, let's make it clear, though. This isn't just about a shelter. If, if we're talking about just a shelter, you're not reading this further enough along. We are going to build a low-barrier shelter. It is not going to take up all of the one-tenth to operate once it's built. And there are other services they talked about. They talked about a day shelter. They talked about more wraparound services. They talked about these places, they're going to need places to go, and there's not enough transitional housing. This is going to do more than just build the Moses Lake or the Walla Walla shelter. So make no bones about that. This is not just about that. This is about lots of stuff.
Okay, and I understand.
And this 60% money also goes to funding operations and maintenance of those facilities.
Right.
But the white paper doesn't say, say that. The white paper strictly focuses on this homeless shelter.
Which we, which we need to do.
It does have the Phase Two in that white paper, though, that talks about permanent supportive housing. It talks about the day use shelter. It talks about the, it talks about the mental behavioral health gaps that we have. And those are just really key on those wraparound services going forward. If we only do the sleep center, we're really not being successful on the problem. We've got the gap in the, the day use, too, for the folks going downtown, as Linda mentioned, Councilmember Harold. And, and then we need to, once we get them stabilized with the wraparound services, we need a place for them to live. And we need more assistance with behavioral health, mental health. So that's, that, it's, it's a multi-tiered approach to be successful in our, our recommendation.
But the first, a major thing that we're going to try to accomplish first is to build the low-barrier shelter and have it try to be operational by sometime late this year, first part of next year, so we can get people off the streets and take care of them as needed. But again, Jim Bailey's right, and Ruth, you're right. There's going to be more money available once this is up and operating than just to run a sleep center. And there'll be other services that will need to be handled with that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
May I just add a comment? My suggestion about that would be that once we are up and running and we determine exactly what this is going to cost, if we find that we are accruing more dollars than we absolutely need, that's the time you do your course correction and you go back and you adjust it, drop it to, to a lower point. Because there's no intention here to use this for what is unintended.
So Keith, any questions?
Well, I guess, I, let's do a clarification, because I'm hearing you saying that we're planning on using this for what the white paper states, but I'm hearing you say we're going to do more than that in the future.
Yeah, there's more money than what the white paper would articulate that we would need. But there's also more services that we would need. And to just build a shelter, a night shelter, and say that's it, we're done, and then you get, you get a couple of folks that are looking for transitional housing, and they qualify for transitional housing, and we don't have any transitional housing for them, what good did you do then, besides give them a place to stay? So we need to be able to get, and Moses Lake has had some remarkable success in terms of getting people wraparound services, getting people actually places to live and getting them jobs. And that is the goal, is this is just to do that. But to, to have someone get successful and be able to go to transitional housing and then not have a place to take them, what good have you done, other than providing them a place to stay? So we have to think of it more than just the shelter. The shelter's important, and it's the reason we sort of got here, is because the Boise case prohibits us from doing the things that you've asked us to do. I hear it regularly at council meetings, we need to do more about this, we need to do more about that, and we're trying our hardest. Yet you're doing, doing a disservice if you just stop at the shelter and say, well, that's all it's going to be. It's going to take more than that. It's hard to bifurcate exactly what that looks like. But at this point, you know, your, your choices are either we, we don't enact this and we end up really not being able to, you can build a, you can probably build the shelter with the grant money but can't operate it. You're taking money out of the Bruce Hotel or other organizations that are doing good things, because we don't have enough in the homeless pot to do that. So you're sort of all in or all out. And I think all in is a, is a better spot at this point, because it's going to get us the shelter built and give us a chance to do other things to try to improve the lives of those that are less fortunate.
Well, I'll, I'll be clear that, you know, raising taxes is something none of us really like to do.
We still haven't heard from, from the, from the public. So before we start, you know, articulating our, sort of our views, this is more about questions of staff at this point.
And, and so I think, I think you, between all of you, you guys have done a great job of presenting it. So I think at this point, I'm, I'm okay.
I have one, one, yeah, quick thing. The resolution, since the, the two communities are, are passing ordinances to do this, the East Wenatchee ordinance and our ordinance, are they the same, is it the same language? And I guess when, why I'm raising this question, is it, who's going to be the lead agency? We're collecting the money, who's, who's going to be in charge of spending it? Are we going to have a joint committee or a joint something between the two cities?
Sounds to me like that's the reason why we'll have an interlocal agreement between the two cities that Glenn talked about, would be to sort of articulate that. Yeah. Who's paying for what? Where's the money going? Obviously, we collect ours, they collect theirs. The issue is, do they pay for part, we pay for part? Do they give theirs to us and we pay the bills? Do we give ours to them? We just got to sort of, sort of sort that stuff out.
Okay. Yeah, okay. That, that answers my question. Thank you.
Okay. Before we hear from the community members that are on our go-to meeting, any other questions for staff?
Just to reassure, I know Brad said it, so the, maybe the audience can know, the people can know. So for every $100, it's going to be 10 cents. Is that correct?
Yep.
There's a lot of people who've been saying it's going to be a lot of money out of my pocket. Just to confirm, it's just 10 cents for every $100, correct?
That's the math.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, it's 10 cents.
10 cents on a hundred. Yeah, for every $100, it's 10 cents.
Yeah, for every $100 you spend on a pair of pants is 10 cents.
Yeah. So it's, it's nothing.
On taxable items.
Yeah, on taxable, correct.
All right. With all of that, I think it's time for us to turn it over to the members of the audience who wish to address the council. So I think what I'll do, I actually, Glenn can see the attendees. And for those of you that are on the line, I will tell you that the city council received written comment today from Alan Walker. And we received written comment from our friends at the Salvation Army, Ralph and Diane Jimenez. We got an email from Vicky and Sam Mills today, and then one from the Chamber of Commerce. So those are all ones that we have gotten today. Oh, excuse me, and we got a late one from Diane Young today from Leavenworth. So those are the ones we've gotten today. So I thought what I would do is I, I've gotten some emails from folks that wanted chat today. So maybe start with, say, Russ Bydell, Russ, do you want to address the group? I see your phone is off or not on. But if you risked to turn it on, maybe you could address the council now?
Oh, hi, Mayor Kuntz, is my phone on now?
You are perfect, Russ.
Well, I, I think I have to go off to the City of East Wenatchee and also to our mayor and our city council. I think you're doing a, a very good job of looking at this carefully. The South East. Oops, sorry. So do I do anything else to unmute, or do I just talk?
I apologize about that. You can talk now.
You're doing good, Russ.
So I was just saying, I have to go off to the council and mayor of East Wenatchee and also to Mayor Kuntz and Wenatchee City Council. You're approaching this very carefully and deliberately. And I think that it's a, it's clearly a serious issue for our community, one that we want to address. Mayor, or Major, excuse me, Major Ralph Jimenez and Major Diane Jimenez, the Wenatchee Corps of the Salvation Army and our advisory board put together this letter that we've given to you to go into your record. The Salvation Army is currently, as stated in our letter, providing services, including cash for people who need money for rent and for utilities. We're currently providing free dinner, meals, but we want to do more and we want to be part of this solution. And so I think one of the things the Salvation Army, and we also want to express appreciation to the Women's Resource Center, the Gospel House, and the YWCA and other organizations that are helping. But we, speaking for the advisory board, the Salvation Army, and, and our commanding officers, the Majors Jimenez, we want to increase our efforts. And we want to, we're in the middle of a five-year strategic plan. We'd like to include this project within our strategic plan. And so we're hoping that we can work together with the two cities. And we feel like a coordinated effort will be important. We have a number of charities, churches and, and other charities who want to help. And so I think one of the things we're looking to, Mayor Kuntz, is, is a leadership coming, I don't know if it'd be Glenn DeBries with the City of Wenatchee or somebody in East Wenatchee with, with their city, or somebody else that's selected. But I think we're looking for leadership that would help us know, as we might say, know, the left hand can know what the right hand is doing, to, to help us coordinate. So we want to be part of this, but we, we're also looking for help to, to see how we can all do this effectively together.
Great. Thanks, Russ. Appreciate your comments. So I see Tom McLaughlin from President of the Chamber. Would you like to address the council? Maybe not. I see Rory Turner and Laurel Turner. One of you want to address the council? Laurel, I see you there.
And Laurel, Laurel is unmuted.
Laurel is unmuted.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to express my, for the one-tenth of 1% sales and use tax to fund the low-barrier homeless shelter and other homeless housing solutions in the Wenatchee Valley. I've been working as a homeless housing provider and advocate for over six years, and I have come to understand that there needs to be a continuum of care, a range of services, especially in a very tight rental market. Some folks need short-term support, some need transitional housing, and some will be wonderfully being permanently housed right from the street. When the housing rental market is severely restricted, however, more people, especially the most troubled, remain unsheltered and need help taking the smallest of first steps, steps that often start in a low-barrier shelter. This is, there's not one way into homelessness, there's not just one way out. The WRC has a range of programs, and city, county, state, and federal grants support these solutions, all of which I feel are necessary to serve the diverse needs of the homeless community. That being said, those grant funds do not fully cover our programming, and each year we spend thousands more to cover the gap. None of these programs should be further defunded, especially when a solution like the tax increase is at hand. They're important parts of the continuum and have been effective in their own right in getting people sheltered and housed. The homeless housing efforts that we have been taking, been able to get off the ground are working and need to be supported to reach the goal of making homelessness for anyone in our town rare and brief. I would like to state as well that I stand in support of this ordinance, not just as a homeless advocate, but also as a downtown property owner and a frequent downtown patron. A low-barrier shelter that includes case management is an important step in addressing the homelessness problem at its very base, and I hope that the council will adopt ordinance 2021 dash.
Thank you, Laurel. Appreciate the comments. Linda Haglund, I see you on the line. Can we unmute Linda? There we go.
I'm unmuted. Mayor, oh, I guess I'm camera off, too. I'm having all kinds of fun here.
You're good.
Mayor, Council. Linda Haglund, Wenatchee Downtown, Association Executive Director. Thank you. Thank you for having this discussion. I'm about two months from my 10th anniversary doing this job, and in every meeting regarding this issue in our community, the same thing comes up. It's going to take a community. It's going to take all of us working together to help to get a solution. This feels very collaborative to me. It feels collaborative with both cities. It feels collaborative with the people that are working to make positive change. I get the calls. I get the calls when they're swimming or bathing in the flood, clothed or unclothed. I get the calls when the Palouse parking lot is just about to become summer camp down there. And if it is not a dignified way for anyone to sleep on the concrete, on a cardboard that they've gotten out of a trash can downtown. I just, as an organization.
Invalid selection.
Lights were nazzed over the holidays. All of our extension cords were stolen, and many of the lights were cut to make it darker down there. Our, our police are pretty hamstrung right now, and it's frustrating. My fear is if we continue and do nothing, that this great fun thing happening in downtown, where property owners are investing in our downtown, where I get calls weekly about space to lease downtown, this synergy, and this, and this issue gets worse, that synergy, that fun goes away. It will. It will not be a place that people want to conduct their business. We gotta do something. We gotta have a say in what our community looks like and feels like--
Invalid selection.
--to everyone. So is this an easy solution, council members? This is a hard one, and I get it, but doing nothing is not an answer either. So I I just thank you for letting me say something. I'm looking forward to positive new future with good change and new opportunities for the most vulnerable in our community.
Thank you, Linda. Dan Hamilton, I see you on the line. Glenn, can you unmute Dan Hamilton? I've never known him to be muted, honestly, in his whole life, so this is probably--
Rory, I'm just trying to find--
Lower side.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Oh, actually, you, oh, he is unmuted. He just, Mr. Hamilton, you just need to unmute yourself. There you are, sir.
Mayor, council members, I'm in support of this measure. I'm a business owner, a property owner in the downtown area. The last year, we've seen our occupancy rate drop from a 95% to 30%. We've seen increase in garbage, vandalism. On the GoUSA side, our clients, as well as our employees, don't feel safe. One day recently, we had a campground basically set up in front of our great door. It took the police over an hour to clear it, and speaking to the police, they were frustrated. Right now, they can do very little. They get disrespected. This is something we need to do now, and I really feel that the longer we wait, the more expensive it's gonna get, and it's gonna get to a point where we can't do anything. The tax is very little when you really look at it, the 10 cents to $100, and for a citizen to say they're not willing to invest in that, yeah, that's not right. You know, we're we're investing in our community, yeah, but we also have to realize that it's just not the citizens. It's our visitors, the people coming from Seattle, from Spokane, from out of state to enjoy what we offer here in Wenatchee. What's coming to the Valley? We've got a family fund center. We've got a new winery and brewery, as well as a lot of new new places that are coming. And to expect people to come and have to deal with, you know, campgrounds and, hey, I've got to climb over something, I've got to be disrespected, that's not right. You know, my family, I, we have our bicycles down at my offices, you know? My kids come down after work to ride with me. You know, I've got tenants that they bring their bikes, go ride at lunchtime. They don't do that anymore. They don't feel safe. You know, you can't ride under the overpass. It it's not safe. People can't enjoy what Wenatchee has to offer. You know, for the council members that are are against this, you know, you've got to realize that you're representing Wenatchee and all the good things about it. And again, this is 10 cents for $100. We're risking businesses moving away, but we're also risking new businesses coming to Wenatchee, you know, deciding not to come to Wenatchee. You know, I see this every day. I drive to work, and I gotta decide, hey, do I have to drive through the alley and see if there's people sleeping on my my loading dock? Yeah, and then do I really want to sit there and spend the the 10 minutes, you know, talking to Rivercom, you know, to get an officer out there, and then when I talk to the officers, they're so frustrated? This is something we have to do. It's very impressive that, you know, I believe the rates are the 34% of the people who access, you know, these sleep centers, you know, they're turning around their lives, they're getting into housing beyond this. You know, and to say that, you know, I I can be greedy about my business, but this is also something that's helping society. Now, it's not gonna be the only thing. This is just the first step.
All right, Dan, you got you got to wrap up. Your three minutes is going, so you got to wrap it up.
Well, thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. All right, so I'll just kind of go down some lists again. So I saw Rachel Petro. Do you want to address the council? All right, we'll unmute you, Rachel.
Am I unmuted?
You are now.
Am I there? Okay, hi, I'm Rachel Petro. I'm the owner of Petro Strategic Solutions, and I serve as the advocacy chair of the Wenatchee Chamber of Commerce, Wenatchee Valley Chamber of Commerce. And I know that you have a letter of record that was submitted earlier today, which articulates kind of our full position. First of all, definitely want to say that we support finding solutions, as you're hearing from business owners, and we as a community have got to find solutions. So I'm not gonna go through our letter--
Invalid selection.
--but I do want to highlight one issue that we're particularly concerned about, and that really is focusing on a sunset clause. So I liked what I heard from staff about recommending a regular review of metrics and making sure the program is working. We're very concerned with the sunset clause, and there's a couple of reasons for that that are articulated in our letter, but I'll just highlight a few. First of all, this is a city of Wenatchee and a city of East Wenatchee council medic action, but this is going to affect the entire region. I, for example, I live in the county, not the city. Well, I'm definitely affected, and so we want that to be able to be considered as a region because obviously we're we're a hub. So that would be one reason. So we just, I just wanted to put on the record verbally so folks know that we very much support a solution, and we very much support a sunset clause that really enables us to come together as a community. So understand the pressure you're under. We do need a solution. I think we've all, we drive around, we get it, but we just want to be very careful about doing that. It's very, we want it to be effective. And so anyway, I'm not gonna belabor it. You have our letter that articulates that. You should all have that in your packets, but I was a little concerned if the staff was recommending perhaps not having a sunset clause. So I I hope hopefully that you, council members, will discuss that a little bit more, but we would definitely be in support of that, really to facilitate making sure that the program is the most effective and that the funding is most effective, and that we're really targeting successful things that are that are helping, and that we also get the entire community and entire region that's appropriate involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Kyle Brugman, do you wish to address the council? I see you're there. Can you unmute Kyle there, Glenn?
He is good to go.
All right, Kyle, you're good.
And Mr. Brugman, you do need to unmute yourself. If you find the speaker and on your screen. There you go, sir.
I didn't have anything to add. I was here to gather information and and on behalf of the advisory council of Salvation Army.
Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Yep. Diane Young, I see you're on the line. Do you wish to address the council? We did get your written material today.
Yeah, my statement pretty much says that I'm I'm just mostly concerned about the quality of life. That's the secondary issue. My primary issue is just that we address the humanitarian problem, so thank you.
Thank you. Alicia McCray, Alicia, do you wish to address the council?
I do, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I'm Alicia McCray. I'm the executive director of the Shawnee County Wenatchee Housing Authority, and I do wish to express my support of the dedicated tax. And I'm doing that not only as the director of the housing authority, but as a resident of Wenatchee as well. I live at 1021 Idaho Street, right in the in the heart of Wenatchee, and I see a lot of homelessness in our neighborhood on on a daily or weekly basis. I think that we're fortunate to have the opportunity to support the type of of shelter and housing we're looking at. The city and housing and shelter providers have have been working on this for a really long time, and it will, gosh, it's gonna help everybody. It's gonna help the jail and the hospital and the police and the general public, and especially the homeless population by providing them with with safe shelter. So I just want to go on record as as I encourage you to consider adopting Resolution 2021-13. Thank you.
Thanks, Alicia. Appreciate it. Alma Chacon, I see you're on the line. Would you like to address the council?
Hi, yes, I am here also to speak in favor of the resolution. We are located here in the South End at 766 South Mission Street, and we we, every year we have a couple of tenants to save the lease. We have a couple right now, and so I'm all in favor of finding a place for our homeless population and having a place for them to go, especially during the winter month. So just calling in in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. So I see a caller by the name of Brett. Would Brett like to address the council? I don't have a last name. Not hearing from Brett. I see a Karen. Does Karen wish to address the council?
Brett, he just need to unmute himself.
Or did I miss Brett?
Karen is active.
Karen?
Hi, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mayor Kuntz and council members, I'm Karen Calhoun. I actually live in East Wenatchee, but have been a resident of the area for 40 years or more now, and have been involved with many local endeavors, activists, projects, and those supporting the social fabric of our community. My husband and I really believe that the proposal before us is one that will enhance the quality of life for everyone and create a key component to addressing the issues of the unsheltered and homeless population. I know it's not the the entire package, but it certainly will provide one more piece of the puzzle to make this better. And as so many people have said, this is the sales tax, and we don't pay sales tax on food. And, you know, the very small amount on a $100 purchase would be barely noticeable to most of us, and so I just feel that it is a wonderful opportunity for both Wenatchee and East Wenatchee to work together to provide some support to that roughly 85 individuals who are the chronically unsheltered to start out with and see where that takes. I know it's in the hands of very good people, so thank you for allowing me to make a statement.
Thank you, Karen. So should we give Brett another try to see if Brett unmutes himself? Not hearing Brett. Mario Reyes, do you want to address the council? I see you're on.
Hello, Mayor, a member of the city council. I, my name's Mario Reyes, and I've worked here in Wenatchee for the last 24 years, and I I am speaking to the council in support of the resolution to provide solutions to the homeless situation that is taking place in this in our area. We we live in a beautiful place, and we have to address this issue, the homeless issue, not just because of the it's good for the city, but also it's a moral obligation and and the sense of humanity that we need to approach this issue. So I support you, you therefore, the city of Wenatchee and East Wenatchee, to address the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. All right, so I've got caller three and caller five. I have no idea who you are, or I have no idea how you would communicate with us. Caller three is unmuted, though.
Hi, I'll be caller number three. This is Chuck Engel. I live here in Wenatchee, been here for the last six years, and very grateful to the council and you, Mayor, everything that you are doing, echo all the sentiments. This is the first time listening in, just want to try and get an understanding of of how things are running here in the community, and full support. I look forward to more in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Caller five.
And I believe caller five was Mr. Spidel.
Oh, that was Mr. Spidel. Okay. So then Todd McLaughlin, did you, I'll come back to you. Do you wish to address the council? If we can unmute you and you unmute yourself?
He is unmuted. He just needs to switch the switch himself off on his speaker, on on the speaker rather.
Not hearing Mr. McLaughlin. I see Mayor Crawford from East Wenatchee and Shane Magdaugh, council member. Either one of you wish to address the council? Are you just listening to our great work here in the city of Wenatchee?
Mayor Crawford can unmute herself if she-- Nope, there she is.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. No, I just want to say I appreciate, at least from the East Wenatchee side, the opportunity where we can partner with Wenatchee. We already do on many homeless services, and and this is just an extension of that, and I do feel that this is a great, well, this is definitely a Valley-wide issue, but this is also a Valley-wide solution, and I'm just glad to be able to partner with Wenatchee if this passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Crawford. Councilmember Magdaugh, do you wish to address the council?
Just to say thank you. I'm glad I was able to participate, and I was glad that the the public came to our meeting last week as well, and it's it's very nice to see all the people that are engaged with the whole process, and we know we have to do this. And the one thing, I don't know, maybe it's just me, but the first step, yes, is the low-barrier shelter, but the funding will also help us provide for affordable housing and other types of homelessness that is not so visual to all of us in the community like it is to Laurel and and others that are on the call. So I'm in support of this, and I'm glad I could listen and watch and hear everybody's comments. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Magdaugh. Peter O'Kane is with Wenatchee World. I'm sure he doesn't want to say anything, and I see Mr. Burton from the city of Moses Lake are listening in, so I think I've got to just about everybody. Is there someone there that you're saying that I didn't get?
Rory Turner.
Does Rory want to talk? He said he wanted his wife to talk.
She she's the professional. I'm a listener on this one. Well, I wanted to just, well, first of all, thank you, council, for taking on. This is a tough, tough, tough issue. It's it's a systemic issue. You know, this is one tool that that we may have, and we need that. You know, we, there's been several stories about the fountain. Councilwoman Harold, you know, was confronted right next to that. We we happen to own the building that's adjacent to that, and majority of our tenants in that building, it's a wonderful building, the majority of them are single women, and it's not uncommon for them to have to step over, either coming to work or going home, over someone like either clothed or unclothed on on our front steps. And, you know, back to what Dan was saying earlier, and and I think Linda, for sure, Haglund referred to it, is we have great momentum downtown. We've got a lot of really cool things happening, but this is this is this is an issue that that can can really impact that. And so I I'm hugely in support of this, particularly if we can address it with the case management along with it. This is just one little element, but it gives the police a tool that they can deal with this. With that Boise issue, just just you just have no power if you don't have this. But this is a great tool of beginning, and if you throw case manager, case management along with it, you're gonna have success, and we're gonna we're gonna see some of them. So and I'm sure the council will figure out how to address this on an annual basis. You guys do great work. So if you need to nudge it one way or the other, you guys are gonna do that, but but let's get this thing started. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Rory.
And Mr. Mayor, Todd McLaughlin's indicated that he would like to speak in addition to Mr. Burton and the new caller, number seven.
Perfect. Okay, so we'll go to Todd first then.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry, I was, I couldn't get unmuted, but I think Jessica helped me there, so. First off, I would I would like to state from a personal standpoint, from my business running a car dealership, it's never exciting to hear about a sales tax increase, considering that we sell so many cars outside of our own market that brings a lot of sales tax dollars into our community that we would typically never get unless we have such a competitive advantage in the sales tax field. And and don't get me wrong-- And don't get me wrong, I'm a big believer in this initiative to solve this problem and even really willing to do our share. It's just one of those things that I'm always cautious about being callous with tax dollars and possible loss of revenues later down the road when we keep increasing the sales tax. One of the things that I like about a sunset clause is that it gets us to a point where in five years, if this program's working fantastic, can we reevaluate at that time and look at how the funding is actually going? I mean, are we funding this program enough? Are we overfunding the program? It gives us an opportunity to look to see if staffing is correct and is there other avenues? And like Rachel said, is there other players that could be involved, possibly both counties at that time, rather than it just be set as a East Wenatchee-Wenatchee funding program? So again, I speak for myself, but also as president of the Chamber of Commerce, that we are really, really, and I'm not saying that to a point demanding, because that's not the case, but we are really asking for a sunset clause to be initiated with this.
All right, thank you, Todd. Appreciate the comments. And Mr. Burton from the city of Moses Lake. We'll go ahead and get you activated, and you can go ahead and address the council.
Thank you, council and Mayor Coons. My name is Taylor Burton. I am the Housing and Grants Coordinator for the city of Moses Lake. I actually met with several representatives from your city earlier this year to do a tour of our sleep center. So I just want to touch base on a couple of items. You know, homelessness and addressing homelessness is a very diverse and difficult topic to navigate. So the city, we addressed our first point with the operations of our sleep center. Our sleep center's been open for just about four months now. We've served over 100 unique individuals. We've provided over 1,000 nights of shelters since we've opened. The benefit to the city that the sleep center has had is we've met the conditions where we can enforce our anti-camping ordinance. We've been able to go in and clean up these encampments on public lands and parks. We've seen a huge reduction in the number of unsheltered homeless that are living within the city itself that we conducted during our point-time count this year. So the benefits outweigh essentially that potential cost to the taxpayers, because there's so much more cost associated with addressing homelessness than just what this tax is covering. And the opportunity with that sleep center to be a starting point to address homelessness, really for us at the city of Moses Lake, is incredibly beneficial. We look at it as we want to approach homelessness with a multi-pronged program. So we initiated the sleep center. We're working on an enhanced shelter right now. We're looking at future plans for expanding our affordable housing. So I would just like to state my support for this initiative. I'm not a resident of Wenatchee, but I'm a frequent visitor. My family and I love to come to Wenatchee. We spend a lot of time up there in the area. And I think that this is really a great step forward for the city of Wenatchee and the city of East Wenatchee. And I would just like to commend the council and mayor and the staff for the work that they've done on this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate the comments. And again, thanks for showing us the sleep center in Moses Lake when we came in January. Very impressed with the work you're doing there and the success stories that you're having. Hopefully, the city of Wenatchee has the same number of success stories as Moses Lake.
Mayor, we have a caller seven and a caller eight, and then a chat that we should read into the record.
All right, perfect. So caller seven. If we know who caller seven is, we will unmute caller seven, and caller seven can address the council.
Hello?
Yes, it's all yours.
Can you hear me? Hello? Can I make my comment in Spanish? Would there be someone that could translate it?
Yes, we have two people that can translate it, so go ahead.
Thank you. Mi nombre es Lorena. La razón que estoy llamando es no solo para decir si estoy de acuerdo o no, pero creo que esto es una votación, que es una decisión que no se debería de tomar solo por el cónsul sino por toda comunidad. Hablo por la comunidad.
Un momento, un momento, un momento. La traductora no puede hacer su traducción. Si lo corre todo corrido, tenemos que hacer con despacio, más despacio, en pedacitos. Hi, my name is Lorena, and I am calling to speak on this issue. But really, what I want to say is that this decision should not be just the decision of the council. It should be an entire wide community decision. Siga.
Yo no sabía acerca de esta reunión porque la información no se ha dado a nuestra comunidad de hispana.
I didn't know about this meeting because the information was not put out to the Hispanic community.
Usualmente, esta información, había mucha información traducida al español en el sitio de Facebook, lo cual recientemente ya no está incluida.
Before, there used to be a lot of information in Spanish on the Facebook site, and now there is no longer any information included in Spanish.
Y esta decisión también es algo que impactaría a toda la comunidad hispana y pienso que también deberían de saber ellos acerca de la decisión que se está tomando.
And this decision affects the entire Hispanic community, and they should be heard also so that they can have a say in what's being decided.
Muchas gracias por su tiempo.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lorena. Caller number eight. You want to unmute caller eight? Caller eight, go ahead. Caller number eight.
Our last caller.
Right, I don't hear a caller eight, so...
There a caller just called in that would like to speak?
This is Rachel Petro, and I chatted in, wondering if I could speak on behalf of a client?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so again, my name is Rachel Petro. I'm the principal of Petro Strategic Solutions. I would like to testify on behalf of Action Health Partners. Some of you may know them as Community Choice. In the white paper, there's a lot of discussion about partnering with medical and behavioral health organizations to help the population housed in low-barrier shelters. I would just like to throw out there that Action Health Partners does a lot of peer coordination work, particularly with a rising risk and high-risk population that would be housed in these facilities. And I would highly encourage you to entertain a conversation, both cities to entertain a conversation about how to partner with them. They do this every single day. And they also partner with all of our medical and behavioral health partners in the community. So I just wanted to throw that out there because this is their superpower. This is what they do. And so I just wanted to put that out there for the record and hopefully, as we move forward, solve this problem that you can look to them as part of the solution. So that's it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rachel.
And Mr. Mayor, can I read something into the record from someone who chatted a comment?
So I think, I see the chats in here. So I'll just, I think what I will do is we will make sure those are part of the record. And just I will refer, just sort of, if I can. Julie Rickard did send in. She's a local mental health provider who is in favor of the tax. And then Rachel asked if she could testify. And then Laurel Turner did chat in and talk about how this is going to be able to help law enforcement's ability to enforce the laws. And we'll make sure those are all recorded and part of the record, Tammy. Did I miss any other ones, Glenn?
I think that includes everyone.
Those are the ones that I have. Okay, so I think we've heard from the public. We've heard from staff. So at this point, I will turn the meeting over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your honor, I make a recommendation that the council adopt ordinance 2021-13 imposing additional sales and use tax of 1/10th of 1% for affordable housing and housing-related services as authorized by WRCW 8214.530, adding a new chapter to the Wenatchee City Code and providing for serviceability and establishing effective date. Further recommend that the council incorporate the implementation components identified in staff's presentation for interlocal agreement with the city of East Wenatchee.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hornby, a second by Councilmember Cuevas, to adopt ordinance 2021-13 imposing an additional sales and use tax of 1/10th of 1% for affordable housing and housing-related services as authorized by R C W 8214.530, adding a new chapter to the Wenatchee City Code and providing for severability and establishing an effective date. And recommend that the council incorporate the implementation components identified in staff's presentation for an interlocal agreement with the city of East Wenatchee. Discussion.
I'll start.
Go ahead, Ruth.
So I'd like to start by saying that I was once a homeless person. I was a homeless child. So I understand the humane side of this issue. I really do. However, I have concerns about what we are trying to do here. First, in regards to Seattle. You know, I did a quick research on Seattle and what Seattle has done. I don't believe that the Seattle problem with homelessness has anything to do with their lack of funding the homeless issue. What we're dealing with here is a homeless issue and then some, because there's a lot of mental health issues and drug and alcohol issues involved with what we're talking about here. Homeless people, who are just homeless, do not go and bathe in, you know, the fountain. They don't defecate outside of the downtown businesses. They're not spread out on the streets, on the sidewalks, and camping out to, you know, to get over a hangover. We're talking about something more than that. Seattle. And I just went back to 2015. From 2015, their homeless budget was $47 million. Last year, it went up to $1 billion. And guess what? Recently, I was in Seattle. And Seattle is still dying because it has not been alleviated. That problem continues, even with the billion-dollar budget. So with that said, I don't know that we are going to find a solution. I was actually real hopeful with the gentleman who spoke from Moses Lake and said that it is helping over there. So I'm glad he was on the, you know, call and actually gave testimony tonight. Because just listening to the entire community and especially to this gentleman from Moses Lake, I walked in here saying, no way, I don't want to vote for this because it's wasted money. But this is what the community wants, and apparently, it's working out in Moses Lake. So it gives me hope that it'll work. So I am going to vote yes on this. I have been known to change my mind, but very hesitantly. And here's perhaps the biggest worry I had and the biggest concern of mine walking into this meeting tonight was the fact that the ordinance itself reads that it will not take effect unless we have, you know, a collaboration from East Wenatchee. And I had an issue with the "or," the county of Douglas and Chelan. I wanted it to be an "and." Why? Because this is their problem too. It's, I'm just really tired of Wenatchee always bearing the brunt for the counties. You know, and I don't think that's fair. To me, it was an issue of fairness. But nonetheless, this is what the community wants. I'm walking into it very cautiously, and I hope, I hope that we are not creating a bigger problem like it is in Seattle because I truly believe that Seattle's been spending all this money, and if you build it, they will come. So I hope that that is not the case. And I just wanted to put that on the record. That is a huge concern of mine, is that if we build this, they will come. And I don't know that it'll be an actual solution. But the community wants it, and so I'm going to support it.
Thank you, councilmembers. Farzai, anybody else wish to make any comments before we vote? Keith?
Yes, thank you. So I really like that we've added the interlocal agreement because that was some of my major concerns, is that we really hadn't addressed any kind of performance metrics. I think that is critical, that we make some kind of an agreement with the city of Wenatchee. I agree 100% with Ruth. This is a regional problem. The counties need to get involved and partner with us as well. I agree 100%. As I stated earlier, none of us like the idea of raising taxes, especially doing it without, for me personally, I really hate doing this without the vote of the people. And this is one of the reasons why I think a sunset clause is very important. There's two reasons. One, if we do a sunset clause and give it enough time to get it built and have a few years to run it, we'll know whether it's meeting those metrics or not. The second is, a sunset clause gives the people running it the incentive to make sure that they run it successfully. Now they know, we have this much time to get this up and going and make it functional. The other thing I think it needs to have is the ability that sometime down the road, that we can now put it to an advisory vote of the people so that our taxpayers, as Alma, I think her name was, dated.
Laura.
Thank you. This needs to be a community decision, not just the seven of us. So I think that's one of the reasons I feel pretty strongly that a sunset clause should be added, five to seven years. I don't have a problem with that, but I think it needs to be put in there so that it's run efficiently. And if it's not, it doesn't become another taxpayer-funded debacle that doesn't go anywhere like Seattle's obviously is doing.
Councilmember Bailey?
I've heard that statement a couple times, and I think there's people in here that know that we feed people, and they're coming for that. So one of the other things that's very critical is we need to do another count because we know that the current count that was done of homeless was done in the winter. And it's cold here, and we know that a lot of our homeless go elsewhere when it's cold. So absolutely, before anything is built, we need a summer count so that we know exactly how many people we're really dealing with because it doesn't do any good to build 120 beds if our need is really more than that. So I think that really needs to be a critical, that needs to be part of that local inter-agreement. Local, inter-local.
Inter-local, yep.
Thank you. Inter-local agreement. I think that needs to be part of that, that that count needs to happen during the summer so that we know exactly what we're dealing with. I think those address most of my concerns. I am a little bit concerned about the white paper that we were all given, that we read, and that was kind of our understanding is that that was what the money was going to be spent on, was the things in the white paper. I totally agree with those two things, that we need the low-barrier shelter and that we need some kind of a day-use area. Transitional housing, there's other fundings for that. You know, we get the voucher program that we can put them up in hotels and help them through with that. There's the rental programs where we can actually get them into a rental house. The landlords are really liking the way that's working. Those are the kind of things that we need to look at, not going out and building low-income housing because we can't build low-income housing. There is no such thing as building low-income housing in this day and age with all the regulations that we have. So again, I would seriously like everybody's opinion on whether a low or a sunset clause is added to this ordinance before we pass it. Thank you.
I would be in agreement with the sunset.
Councilmember Bailey, you want to go ahead?
Yeah. Yeah, I, you know, I don't know whether we're just, you know, playing semantics here, you know. Call it what it is. you know, call it whatever you want to call it. It's, you know, that there is some kind of end game in a sense. So, if the interlocal, I know Glenn, you talked about, you know, an annual review and those kinds of things, like we get on our CDBG program and those kinds of things. But it needs to be, I think, more than that. If at the end of five years or seven years, I don't know, one better than the other, I would think at least in five years, we ought to have a pretty good idea of what, whether it's flying or it's not. I guess I would, you know, to have that, at that point, and I guess I would like to see a date put in there, that on whatever, you pick a number, but, you know, July 1 or August 1 or whatever, that at that point, we take and have a major review and make a decision whether to continue or not. And whether, I don't know if we want to put in there that, you know, we're doing it councilmatic now. I know that in the chamber letter, they said, you know, that it would go to the people at that point.
Right.
I, you know.
So, the RCW gives you guys the authority, right? As soon as you make a decision today to say whatever, the next council can change that, and whatever you said today is gone, right? They walk in and say, you know what, we're removing the seven-year sunset clause, or we're not going to take it to a vote of the people as an advisory ballot, because those are your two choices. And so, as I told some folks earlier today, you know, I'm a firm believer in not tying the hands of future council members. Future council members, a lot of us here aren't going to be here seven years from now to be helping make the decisions. But I trust that group that shows up to be doing what they believe to be in the best interest of the community at that point. And for us to tie their hands, I think, is probably doing them a bit of a disservice when they can walk in their very first day and vote to overturn what you guys have said. You can vote to overturn this three weeks from now, right? You have the ability, walk in anytime you want and say, you know what, it's not working. How many times in the last 12 months have we, in a city council meeting, dealt with homeless issues? Whether it's Sandra saying we need a new contract for more money, came in for CARES funding, so we're going to do more hotel vouchers. I think I sign more contracts for homeless than I sign paychecks around this place sometimes. We deal with this all the time. We will review this every two months in a city council meeting when they bring us another contract. This is not going to be just no one talking about it. It's going to be on the front page of the newspaper when we build it and we open it. I don't, councilmen, you guys have the absolute authority to be in this anytime you want to be in it, or the next council does. So, to walk in and say, well, we're going to sunset it at this point, and we're going to require a vote of the people at some point, listen, I wish the two counties would have just done it, and we wouldn't be having this conversation, and we would have a regional approach.
I'll say amen to that.
But they're not interested, and they just want to see the cities, I think, fail for some reason, because we have a problem and we need to work on it. But I have a hard time, I understand the concept. I don't think this is an issue that we're just going to sit there and say, oh, we raised the tax and we're not, because if it's bad, we're going to know about it, and we're going to be going, hey, you know, what part of this program is working? I think we're going to know about it probably every day when we walk downtown, and we're going to see the successes. And chief's going to walk in and say, hey, you know what, we've had a few successes. And you know what, we're going to have some failures too. And we're going to look at the failures and go, hey, what can we do to do better at that? But I think to tie the hands of a future council, when legally they can sort of do whatever they want, I'm sort of against that. And when I was a council member, I was always against trying to tie the hands of future people. They're smart, they're going to be representing the community when they show up, we're going to be drinking coffee in the coffee shop, telling old stories about what it was like to be on council back in 2020, right, or 21. So, I just don't feel like we should tie their hands, let them sort of figure it out, and they'll make the decisions sort of on an annual basis. That's my thought. And I understand the reasoning for why you would want to put one in. I trust our councils, future councils, and I trust our staff, and I trust us as much as we deal with this and talk about it, to be, have this be front and center regularly.
May I add something?
Yeah, go ahead, Linda.
I just need to.
At some point, you should come back here and sit, shouldn't you?
You can.
You have a chair over here.
So, while she's finding her new seat, I dislike increasing taxes, like most of us, putting more burden on it. We're already experiencing burden. I've been talking to my neighbors and constituents for months about this, long before this, you know, came to council with recommendations from staff. And every single person said, we need to do something. So, that's where we're at. We're at the point of doing something. We need to make those decisions, and we need the flexibility as council to adjust those. And I think we review those constantly, as the mayor said, and as well as Glenn and staff has done. So, I understand the desire to have them on sunset, and initially, I was in favor of that, where, but if we're out there doing our job as council and talking to our constituents and doing that in our districts, I think we already have that in place. That's it.
Councilmember Harold?
I just want to say, I completely concur with you, Mayor Coats. As for Seattle, you're right, Ruth, absolutely. My question is, have they really done a good job of supporting the police that have to clean up the mess? And I don't believe they have, because you hear about it on the news all the time. Regarding the sunset clause, I have concerns about that, simply because it really ties our hands as to what we can do in the future. I think it's very adamant that as we move forward and we plan this out, that we make sure those performance metrics are in there that you want. And annually, once a year, when we do that annual report and we tell you what's going on, if we cannot show you that we have made improvements and we've had an impact on homelessness, you need to yank that funding. That's important.
Thank you, Linda. Councilmember Cuevas, would you like to say anything? I know we haven't heard from you yet. Would you like to address the council before we vote?
It would be easy for me to save everyone some time and just say ditto to the other councilmember's remarks, yet most of you know that I'm just not able to do that. I, I'm going to vote yes, and I'm going to vote yes for a couple of reasons. First is the obvious humanitarian reasons. This is something that we can avail ourselves of and make a difference in people's lives, not only the people who are homeless or home-free, but also our other residents and constituents. I'm also going to vote for it because I appreciate the perspective of Chief Crown and his officers in dealing with a myriad of, you know, quite honestly horrible problems. Now, we have, in our community, we have acceptable standards of behavior that are regardless of domicile. And to be put in a position where we can't assure citizens are not harassed, that they can't use the public parks, that they can't walk down sidewalks, although that's a small, very small component of the homelessness and the home-free issue, it's something that we need to, that we need to bring back to our citizens, to be able to use those facilities and go to those public places without fear of personal danger. I, I get it that homelessness has become kind of a growth industry, and with that comes sometimes the incentive not to really make progress. And I'm thinking here that, I, a couple councilmembers have mentioned this, and I want to really point out what Councilmember Asparza said about the issue of mental health and substance abuse leading to some of the behaviors that the community doesn't find acceptable. You know, this country intentionally and systematically dismantled the mental health system in the 1980s, and now 40 years later, we see the consequences of that. And let's remember that the state of Washington, the response for homelessness, response for behavioral health delivery, and the response for substance and alcohol abuse lies in county courthouses, not the city halls. And I am just a little bit bothered that our counties have been really silent on the issue of propping up behavioral health services and substance abuse services, because you see, just with the, as I believe Councilmember Hornby called it, the 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM overnight sheltering, that doesn't take care of the 7:00 AM, 7:00 PM. And without really seriously ramping up our behavioral health and our substance and alcohol abuse treatment programs, this may succeed, but it will have the limited success without those. When the interlocal agreements are put together, I think that we owe ourselves and our constituents a very defined evaluation system. We need metrics on how this is working. And I'm talking the feel-good kumbaya metrics, like we had so many contacts, we gave out so many bottles of water, we told people where they could go. I want to see some real metrics. I want to see vandalism in the parks reduced. I want to see the contacts from citizens concerned about other property issues. I want to see some real metrics and follow those so that we can see if the program is succeeding. So, with that, I would conclude my remarks and say, I am going to vote for the motion as presented.
Thank you, Councilmember Cuevas. And I think my hope would be that the two counties adopt a similar sales tax, and that money goes to supporting mental health, drug and alcohol abuse, perhaps some expansion of parkside to deal with those sorts of issues, so we can put people in long-term care and get them the help that they need. I don't think there's enough money from these two city pots to get it done, but I think if the two counties got in the middle of it, I think you would find way more success stories. So, I think it's our job as citizens and as councilmembers to convince the two councils, excuse me, the two county commissioners, county commissions from both counties to adopt a similar language, and let's get some more money for mental health as well.
Absolutely agreed.
All right. Councilmember Cuevas, would you risk to say something before we vote?
I'll just say it short, because I'm learning from the experiences from my councilmembers. It's awesome, what you guys are saying. From my point of view, when I started, as Councilmember Travis said about, when I was campaigning, the majority of my constituents wanted to reduce the homeless, help the homeless, and that was one of my main goals. And I've been here a year already, and I'm thankful that the task crew has done a fabulous job on this. It's not easy, it's been tough, and I've been seeing it, and I've been hearing it. I'm really happy about this, and I also speak as a business and property owner and as a father, and for the rest of the parents, I want to see our kids run the apple loop again and run the streets happy as we did in the past. I do want to say that I'm happy that this is going through, that this is the beginning, and I'm looking forward for it, and I'm 100% in.
Okay, so, any other comments? Mr. Bailey, anybody else wish to address before we vote?
Well, my last comment, and Jose, you really didn't say whether you were for or against putting a sunset clause in there. You talk about tying the hands of the council. I don't see how putting a sunset clause in there really ties anybody's hands, because, as you mentioned, we can make any decision next week to reimpose it or take it off again. So, if we put a sunset clause in there, we avail some of the concerns that citizens had, and when the time comes, we can also vote in another ordinance that continues to keep it going.
Just follow up on that. I think, yeah, I think that's something we can work out. I think the interlocal agreement, if we have, and yes, I, you know, you're right, we can change it anytime we want, but with all due respect, Your Honor, I think sometimes, and the key point for me is that five years from now, six years from now, probably most of us aren't going to be here. And so, I think it's important to have that tickler in there, that at that point, we need to, for sure, make sure that we do take a look at it. I think it's just a good way to have that reminder in there. I think we can put that in the interlocal. Keith, are you comfortable with doing it that way, or?
As long as it's publicly stated somewhere that it does have a sunset clause in there, I think, again, we make the citizens comfortable, we have the metrics that we have to meet, and.
I would think maybe the interlocal might be the place for that, then.
If we can do that, if we can do it through the interlocal, I'd.
You okay with that, Steve?
No. I don't think so.
The interlocal could talk about a review in five years with, you know, council discussion or something that gets it to the point where that's part of the discussion, right, without...
Yeah, you can provide for a review.
I said that, this is terrible. We call you and provide for a combination of the order.
Right.
In the existing language, staff's recommendation includes a provision for a five-year holistic review at both councils meeting together.
Yeah, which is probably, in essence, the same thing, yeah.
You can say a review with the intent to determine whether or not to continue on with the ordinance.
Yeah.
We could do that.
Yeah. Which is sort of the same thing, right?
Yeah. Rose by any other name.
Yeah. All right, so we do have a motion, and we do have a second. We've had all the discussion that I think warrants this important decision. So, with that, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? For the record, it passes seven to zero. So, with that, it is not quite bedtime, but it's getting near, and I will need a quick little five-minute break, and we'll re-adjourn for the next public hearing item in about five minutes. Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you're not going to give us any sort of a front look at that. Did you notice that? She's teasing us.
No, it's on Saturday, the public notice goes out.
Oh, okay.
I'm emailing, I'm hopefully going to give you guys like almost a month. So, yeah.
All right, any other questions for Brooklyn on review of the annual review? Any members of the audience wish to address the city council on this public hearing item regarding the community development block grant annual performance and evaluation review? Seeing no members of the audience wishing to address the council, I would turn it over to the council for their, um, any action they'd be willing to take.
Is there action to take?
Well, I think probably a motion just to accept the 2019 CDBG caper.
Your honor, I will make a motion to accept the 2019 CDBG caper.
Second, motion by council member Sparza, second by council member Hornby to adopt, to accept the 2019 CDBG caper as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brooklyn.
Thank you.
All right, we have a number of action items this evening, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and then a lengthy mayor's report. So, uh, Chief, we'll start with you.
Let me get my 20 slide presentation up here.
Just 20?
Just 20. Kidding. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. For the record, Steve Crown, City of Wenatchee Police Chief. Uh, the item before you is amendment to a contract between Shiloh County Public Utility District Number One and the City of Wenatchee for Police Services, um, uh, for directed activities. The amendment reflects the hourly overtime rate for the Wenatchee Police Officers to perform those duties authorized under the contract. The annual contract is seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and thirty-one cents. Uh, staff is recommending city council approve the mayor's signature on the service agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you'd like.
So Chief, is the, uh, you know, the, the amount didn't change, the budgeted amount that they're putting up. So at least in my rough figuring here, that we lose about 21 hours of, of patrol time under the new, new contract. So, uh, is that something that's a concern?
No, um, the, the PUD actually drives the activity. So they, they make the request. Every year, we sit down with some of the folks at the PUD and talk about any sort of special events that are coming up that may need some additional police services. Uh, of late, they have not had any of those major events. Uh, we don't expend hardly any of that contract dollars. We're hoping to, to kind of offer again this year some bicycle patrols, uh, as we finally are getting up to staffing levels that we should be at. And so hopefully they'll take us up on that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for Chief? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion that the city council approve amendment number 12 to the service agreement, SA number ten dash one eighty-two, which reflects the chargeable overtime rates for police officers.
Second.
Second.
Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Bailey to approve amendment number 12 to the service agreement, SA number ten dash one eighty-two, which reflects the chargeable overtime rates for police officers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Chief. Thanks for hanging in there with us tonight.
Thanks, Chief.
Cliff, you deserve an award tonight. And Glenn, but...
He didn't buy me lunch today, so we put him late on agenda.
Okay, excellent.
Won't make that mistake, Ian, really.
Yeah, no kidding.
Good evening, Mayor Council, Cliff Verdic, Building and Fire Code official. Um, we're here tonight to request council adopt ordinance 2021 dash zero nine, amending some portions of Wenatchee City Code 1.99 as our fee schedules. Some, we can go over a few of these, uh, in detail. I try not to take too long. Um, you'll notice in all of our different department fee schedules, there is a 5% technology surcharge added to that, um, as to offset some of our increased costs in our permitting software and Blue Beam plan review software. And, uh, hopefully plan for in the future for updating some of that software. There is a fee change of $100 for a type one administrative fee in planning. Glenn wouldn't mind describing what a type one administrative means.
Sure. So, for example, that's a landscape plan review. There are certain permit types that, um, don't need a referral. It's a limited, uh, action by staff, um, and very clear code items for interpretations. And we just found that over time, um, there, there wasn't a fee to collect that. We also had some critical area review standards. When the council adopted new critical area standards, we referenced that there be a fee to review it. We never put one into effect. And so this catches up with that and provides a fee for review.
On page 13, you'll, you'll notice there's a sewer connection fee that is increased to $100. Well, that, that fee actually increased, uh, when council approved ordinance 202013, but it was inadvertently missed in our fee schedule. So, that's not an actual fee increase. It was increased earlier on. Um, to go through...
Stridner's there?
Yes. On page 18, if I can read that right, I don't have my glasses on. So, we have added a couple of fees, emergency escape or rescue window permits. Those are adding an, an emergency egress window in a basement. And those fees, uh, the building code says we charge fees based on valuation. And those are typically just a two inspection permit. So we said, well, we're, we're taking in a lot more revenue than what it's costing for those. And we'd rather have somebody come in and get those permits so that we can make sure those egress windows are installed correctly. So when they go to sell the house, they could call that a legal bedroom.
Got it.
So we've reduced that fee down to $150. Uh, retainery, retaining wall, rockery permits, that used to be $250 an hour. And we've just said, let's make it a flat fee. Um, changed some things on manufactured housing. Used to be just $200. So we've actually increased it for double wides and triple wides. We don't see very many of those, but, you know, that's significantly more inspection time going out to do a double wide or a triple wide than a single wide. So, um, just to offset some of that. We've also added a fee for revisions to approve plans after issuance. Um, past several years, we have a huge increase and we issue a permit and then we have, um, people coming back in, uh, major revisions to approve plans. Um, and we don't have any fees to offset that. We want them to give us what they're planning to do upfront so we can review it once. And so this is try to offset a little bit of that. Um, we did increase the residential re-roof permits to $75. There, you'll note on page 22 that the copy fees are exempt from the technology surcharge fee. On section four, page 25, uh, operational permit fees, um, through the fire code, um, those increased the old fee, which was adopted in 2009. It had a, uh, original permit fee of 50 and a renewal of 25. We haven't, uh, charged for operational permits since about 2015, 16, when we took over the fire department duties. And so we're re, actually re-implementing that. We're increasing that fee to $50. And, um, what the operational permits fees are, those are special operations that are going on in some businesses that the fire department, when they do their annual inspections, takes an extra look at those because there's hazards involved in those. So this will offset some of our costs, um, that we pay the fire department for those annual inspections.
Cliff, before we leave page 25 there, I was a little, a little confused, uh, about the, you know, on the, on the right-hand side there where it's showing all those different categories of things where it shows deleted, but, uh, now does that, I mean, there's some that make, makes sense. Cellulose, cellulose nitrate film, we haven't used that since the 50s, you know?
Absolutely. This is a list that comes right out of the fire code.
Yeah, okay, so...
Yeah, there's, there's some of those. We'll never, ever charge a fee.
Yeah. So I could, I understand drop, you know, dropping those out, but there, there seemed like there was, there were other ones like, uh, I don't know, like doing flooring or doing something like that, cutting and welding or something like that. So, but those show, those are all deleted too. So did those show up someplace?
Those are the $25 fee.
Oh, those are the 25, oh.
That's the $25 portion.
Oh, okay.
Because it used to be, the original fee was 50, the renewal fee was 25.
I see.
And we've just got rid of the renewal fee. And so it's an annual fee is 50.
Okay, okay. I understand. Thank you.
And I really, I think that is the extent of it. And so I would just ask council to make a motion to adopt that ordinance.
Any questions for Cliff? Pretty thorough job. Some of this we talked about before, right?
We talked about it about a month ago.
Yeah, yeah, workshop. All right, any questions for Cliff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Well, your honor, I would, uh, recommend that the city council adopt ordinance, uh, number 2021 dash zero nine, amending portions of Wenatchee City Code 1.99 fee schedules.
Second. Motion by council member Bailey, second by council member Huffaker to adopt ordinance number 2021 dash zero nine, amending portions of Wenatchee City Code 1.99 fee schedules. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Cliff. Thanks, Glenn. Rob, you're going to do the stormwater pond outfall permit and waterline easement?
I am.
Excellent.
Keep this brief. Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director. Um, we have the next two items on the agenda. The first one before you is, um, we're requesting that you authorize the mayor to sign the temporary permit for the use of the Rock Island Hydroelectric Project lands for the Old Station Stormwater Pond Outfall. This is our large stormwater pond that we have in Old Station that we, uh, received from Shiloh County when we annexed Old Station. Uh, when we annexed that area, we now have to get the permit for that outfall into the Wenatchee River. It's an existing outfall. Um, it is, this particular, uh, permit is for three years because we're going to circle back with the PUD to write a, a permit for all of our outfalls along the Wenatchee River and the Columbia River. So that's why it's only for three years at this time. Jessica has negotiated this with the PUD and it's been reviewed by legal counsel. Uh, is there any questions?
How often does that pond have water in it?
Not very often.
I can't remember the last time it's had water in it.
Travis and I have a vision for a pump track there.
Riding bikes in there, huh? All right, any questions for Rob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your honor...
Go ahead.
Your honor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the temporary permit for use of Rock Island Hydroelectric Project lands for the Old Station Stormwater Pond Outfall.
Second.
Motion by council member Harold, second by council member Huffaker to authorize the mayor to sign the temporary permit for use of Rock Island Hydroelectric Project lands for the Old Station Stormwater Pond Outfall. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And our, uh, this is the easement, right?
Yes. So the next item I have before you is, uh, staff is asking the, or recommended you, uh, authorize the mayor to sign the easement for the regional water line with the Washington State Department of Transportation. This is our 30-inch, uh, regional water line that comes from the wells by Lincoln Rock State Park and brings the water into the valley. Uh, that line has resided in a Department of Transportation right-of-way, uh, since the 1970s. That is, that right-of-way is now being, um, surplus by the Department of Transportation. And they, um, uh, they asked if we wanted an easement, which of course we do. They are required, uh, to, to be compensated for that easement because of the way that right-of-way was obtained. So we've been working with, uh, the Department of Transportation for over a year. The right-of-way was appraised, or the easement was appraised for $325,000. All of our regional partners are in favor of this. Uh, we will do a budget amendment to pay for this easement out of our regional water fund. And, um, and then that, we, we will then have that 25-foot, uh, easement, yeah, uh, for, forever. So, um, is there any questions on this matter?
Yeah, I think I remember, uh, back when they started this process, they said they were going to give us a good deal. And I think, uh, 25-foot easement on five miles of property for $325,000 is a pretty good deal. I, I don't, I...
Not quite up there with Alaska, behind Alaska, but it's pretty good.
It, it could have been a lot more than that. So, um, uh, this is obviously one that we have to have in order to maintain the regional system. So... So I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'm...
Go ahead.
Your honor, I move to authorize the mayor to sign the easement for the regional water line with Washington State Department of Transportation.
Second. Motion by council member Harold, second by council member Hornby, uh, to authorize the mayor's signature on the easement for the regional water line with Washington State Department of Transportation. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Jacob also needs, gets an award. Got your wife and kids at home and you're down here saving Tacoma Street.
Yeah, I picked the wrong night to do this.
What you need to learn to do is take care of Tammy and she'll put you at the front and she'll leave public hearings at the back.
I've obviously wronged her.
I usually call...
So I need to do something.
Usually involves chocolates and flowers.
Okay, good to know. I'll, I'll take that in my notes. Um, for the record, Jacob Hyler, Engineering Services Manager. I'm here tonight for two items related to the Tacoma Street project. Um, first off, I'll start with the construction award. Um, I've been here a few different times talking about Tacoma Street, um, so I, I won't, uh, belabor the details of it. One thing I do want to point out, though, is that our, um, grant agree, or our grant, um, originally included sidewalk just on one side of Tacoma Street, the west side. Uh, during design, we figured out that we needed much less right-of-way than originally anticipated, um, because we were working with the county right-of-way layer and not actual survey information at that point. And so we do have adequate funding to put sidewalk on both sides of the street at this point. So that's, that's good news. Um, one note related to that is it is considered a scope change by the TIB, who's our grant agency. And so we are still waiting on formal approval from them, which we expect in the next week, um, which is why you see the, the pending TIB approval in the, in the action that we're asking for. Uh, the city received three bids. Um, bids came in extremely well. Um, Sullen Construction was the low bidder at about $1.1 million. It's like I said, well below our $1.5 million engineer's estimate. So, um, really good news on that. I don't need to say that often, so I'm going to, I'm going to be happy about that one. And then in terms of schedule, um, at this point, uh, preliminarily, Sullen expects to start construction, assuming it's awarded on April 19th. And we've got about a four-month construction schedule. So the road would be closed throughout that period, except to local access, uh, but that should help expedite construction. So, um, with that, staff recommends that we award the con, the construction contract to Sullen Construction, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Who's, uh, who's doing the inspection or the monitoring of the project? Are we doing it locally or?
That's my next item, and it will be our, uh, hopefully our consultant that designed the project.
Any questions for Jacob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion that the city council award the contract for the construction of Tacoma Street Improvements, Project 1907, to Sullen Construction in the amount of $1,134,508.68, pending TIB approval, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction documents.
Second. Motion by council member Huffaker, second by council member Hornby to award a contract for construction of the Tacoma Street Improvements, Project 1907, to Sullen Construction in the amount of $1,134,508.68, pending TIB approval, and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract documents. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And Tacoma Street?
Okay, so my sec, second item on, on the agenda tonight is, uh, to deal with, um, a supplement to our contract with SCJ Alliance. Um, as I said, uh, they performed the design on this project. Um, and we'd like to retain them for construction inspection and administration as well. Um, that supplement is for roughly $139,000. Um, and that work includes inspection, material approval and testing, uh, pay estimates for our contractor throughout the course of the contract, uh, negotiating change orders, punch lists, um, and then obviously close out, uh, as well. So, again, it's a 75-day contract, and so, um, there is significant time, uh, both for somebody to be out monitoring construction as well as somebody, uh, to take care of the material approval, uh, material testing, um, and so forth that, that goes along with these contracts. So, uh, with that, I, I, staff recommends that the city council, um, authorize the mayor to execute supplement number two with SCJ Alliance. Um, and again, I'm happy to take any question.
I just had one quick question. So this is out of the bounds of what the, our staff can handle, or?
Well, there's, there's always a decision we have to make when it comes to stuff like this. So, um, you know, if, if the decision is made to not take this or to not have it done outside, it would take staff away from work that we have kept in-house at this point. So it's always an option. Uh, but typically with these grant projects, um, it works out well to have the, the firm that designed the project stay on board, assuming they're, you know, local and have the ability to, to perform that service. So...
Perfect, thank you.
And, and I don't have a big disagreement with a project like this, but we have had some trouble in the past where we've hired a contractor to do that, and then they went and subcontracted out to somebody else to do it. And pretty soon, we're so far down the road of the city's interest that things go wrong. And then it's, uh, well, he said, he, you know, I, I'm going to encourage us to make sure that we stay involved in the progress and, and stay on top of it.
Yeah, of course. Fortunately, you know, this project is right next to our, uh, our PSC, and so...
Looked out the window, right?
Yeah, I think we'll, I think we'll get plenty of eyes on it, whether it's Jake Lewing, who's our project manager, or, or Streets Crew, or Storm Crew. There's, there's going to be a lot of people interested when they drive by every day.
Thank you.
Great improvement. All right, any questions for Jacob? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your honor, I make a motion, city council approve of, and authorize the mayor to execute supplement number two with SCJ Alliance for construction engineering services for the Tacoma Street Improvements, Project Number 1907.
Second.
Motion by council member Hornby, second by council member Sparza is the one I heard in my right ear, um, to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplement number two with SCJ Alliance for construction engineering services for the Tacoma Street Improvements, Project Number 1907. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jacob. And I think I can do the next one. Um, part of, uh, is the contract in here? Oh, there it is, it's right there. Yeah, so, um, the, our friends in Olympia changed, uh, a bill that basically with respect to the MPO requires the tribes to be invited to participate and be voting, be, I believe, voting members. And so, uh, the Colvilles have decided to join the Transportation Council as a voting member. And so we have to amend our bylaws and those sorts of things to make sure that, and so all of the organizations that are part of the MPO have to, um, amend our inter-local agreement. So this comes before you from the Transportation Council asking for your approval. And I don't think we have any choice. And they're going to be good partners. It'd be nice to have them on board with us. But we haven't added a new member in, probably since it was formed. We've lost a few, but we got rid of Okanagan County, but, um, so I would ask for your approval of this item.
Well, your honor, I'd make a motion that, uh, council, uh, approve the, uh, request from the Shiloh Douglas Transportation Council, uh, to approve amendment and to, and a motion to approve the First Amendment to the inter-local agreement and authorize the execution of the same.
Second. Motion by council member Bailey, second by council member Cuevas, to approve the amendment and, uh, the First Amendment to inter-local agreement and authorize the execution of the same with respect to adding the Colville Confederated Tribe to the Transportation Council. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report. I've only got two or three quick items. Um, we are currently in phase three. Uh, phase three means certain things to our offices. So we will be open to the public for the first time in over a year, beginning April 12th.
Yay.
So...
It's crazy. It sounds so weird.
So masks will be required, but people will be able to come upstairs and pay their utility bill. People will be able to walk into Public Works and pick up their building permit and meet with staff. Masks will be required. We are going to have security downstairs for the first couple of months. Well more than half of the people that come into the building are looking for social security. So we're going to have a security guard down there and, uh, keep them from coming upstairs. Not necessary. Couple of months, three months, not sure exactly how long, but just sort of...
Can we put some better signage out for social security?
Boy, I, you know, they're pretty big and they're hard, people are just so used to coming here. They don't even look at the signs.
It's been here forever.
I, I think probably twice, I always leave that way, and I think every single week I stop and talk to one or two people and say, you're looking for the place over there. And I help you.
We did when we left council last week.
Yeah, it's just, it's just sort of, but anyhow, we're trying to get sort of something closer to normal, so we're working towards that. We did have our call with Standard and Poor's, uh, yesterday, so we're getting a bond rating for the refinance of the sewer bonds that you've approved. So, uh, Jessica Shaw and their utilities analyst talked for a half hour on things I have no idea what they meant. All the wastewater treatment stuff, waters, I, I don't even, they had their own little time. And I think we did well. I don't know whether we're going to get an upgrade or a downgrade, but everything's going forward to go to the bond market sometime in mid-April. And so, um, it's always, those are always a little bit nerve-wracking when you get the hierarchy from San Francisco calling and questioning your city's finances and how well you're running your water and sewer funds and those sorts of things. But we got through that pretty well. Laura, what else did I suppose to talk about? Those were the two? Okay. Uh, I don't think we meet next week, right? So we meet again the second Thursday in April, which would be the eighth, ninth?
Eighth.
Eighth? Okay. And are we having people here on the eighth?
No, not until the 22nd.
Not until the 22nd, right? So, uh, council members, anything for the good of the order and stuff you're working on?
Just, uh, I guess just a comment. I'm disappointed that, uh, this year that, uh, once we have a chance to finally get back together again, the Downtown Business Association Dinner is on council night, you know?
But... So we will do our best, uh, staff people, to make a very light agenda that night and see if we can get us out of here by 6 o'clock or so.
Okay.
And we'll do our best to try to adjust agendas for that.
Tammy, do you find, you get us all lined up?
Well, what is it?
WDA is the annual banquet.
Everybody.
Everybody.
I will not be going.
It's always a fun one.
Yeah, it's always great.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do a nice job. It's nice to celebrate downtown business. They've had a tough year. We did, uh, push the button on Infra last Friday, so it's there. Um, we'll keep trying to push, uh, as hard as we can to see if we can get some successes there. Watching Olympia pretty closely. Um, not sure whether they'll get a transportation bill or not. We did hear that, uh, out of the Senate capital budget, there's $1.9 million for a Pinnacles prep for the community center. So it sounds like that's going to get funded. So pretty excited about that. Um, Laura tried to get on jury duty today in Douglas County and got kicked off. So she, obviously there's something wrong with her ability to be independent jurist.
Just what you say.
Newton rebid on the...
So they're working on, um, they had to go back out and restart the process. So we signed some more contracts. I expect we'll probably, I think they said 60 days from the time we said go. So I'll, I don't know if we'll be going out to bid maybe in the next 30 days or so, and probably have something back 30 days after that. So maybe 60 days from now. Something like that. You have an hour to open those? I'm not going to even show up because good luck, people are coming. So I, I told you that last time I opened them up, they were bad. So I'll be having a glass of, uh, pale ale someplace while you guys open those up. We might join you. If, hey, if they're good, you'll come down and join me, yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
All right, anything else for the good of the order? Thanks, everyone, for hanging in with us. Jesse, thank you for being here late tonight. Jesse, thank you for being here late tonight. Appreciate all you did. I thought it went really well technology-wise, so good job to the tech team and everybody for doing that. All right.
Thanks, guys.
We're adjourned.